Good evening and welcome to tonight's first meeting of this fabulous school year. Vanessa, can you please call the roll?
Chair Davis?
Here.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Here.
Treasurer Devarti?
Devarti, here.
Secretary Hatcher?
Here.
Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Here.
Trustee Millschain?
Here.
Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Tab A is the recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of July 18, 2023, monthly meeting and August 2, 2023, special meeting minutes as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
Approve, move approval of both of the minutes.
Awesome.
Second.
Thank you. We'll move on to verbal communications. Huh?
Vote.
Vote? Is that an action vote? All in favor, my apologies.
Aye.
Aye.
Rust.
Great.
Spend a minute.
Moving on to citizen participation, verbal communication. Julie Kissel?
Good evening. It is September 2023. Now, while I prefer to share more positives than negatives during my monthly remarks, this is not the case this month. It's been one of the more tumultuous starts to a term in my memory. The WCC EA has been dealing with reporting time, office assignments, load report issues, pay issues, IT help desk issues, critical open or unfilled positions and growing LMS concerns. All of this, as I've discussed with President Belacca, comes down to an issue of consistent leadership. Let me first mention, though, the WCC student newspaper. The Wash No Voice has yet to be published this semester. To our knowledge, no coordinator has been hired since the previous coordinator Judy McGovern announced her retirement this past April. The newspaper and its website have been dormant since May, and the production schedule for fall appears to be indefinitely suspended. The website currently says, "Dear readers, unfortunately, our 2023 publishing schedule is on hold while we search for a new coordinator. We appreciate your patience." While we recognize the challenges specific to filling the coordinator position, five months seems an adequate amount of time in which to have hired a qualified coordinator or perhaps to have found an interim solution. I know of one solution that was presented in the summer that was turned down. Historically speaking, the college has been generous in the support of the student newspaper. We appreciate this support and we look forward to hearing that the college will continue to provide an outstanding extracurricular experience for voice students from a variety of disciplines as soon as possible. The WCC EA also had a Step Two meeting for grievance involving the creation of the yearly schedule for those of our faculty group on a 200-day schedule. We are awaiting the response from HR. The WCCA board will discuss this grievance in detail during our meeting this week and will need to prepare for the possibility of arbitration. No matter the outcome of the Step Two meeting, the WCC EA remains open for collaboration on a solution. So as the WCC continues its conversations with the administration around these and the other issues mentioned at the beginning, much of my time recently has been focused on the new learning management system. I realize this topic is not on this month's agenda, so I'll limit my comments for now. What I have done for each of the board members is to prepare a copy of the emails that I have sent this month concerning the LMS. This is an active issue, only just receiving an update from BPI Vega last night, but the emails should give you a clear timeline of what has happened so far and the urgency expressed by faculty. So with all of this going on, I've sought to understand what's happening institutionally from a research perspective. So I found myself back in one of my favorite organizational theorists, Dr. Richard Scott, in one of my well-marked chapters from institutions and organizations. He says, "How institutions persist once created is an understudied phenomenon. Our current understanding of social structures is that their persistence is not to be taken for granted. It requires continuing effort, both to talk the talk and to walk the walk if structures are not to erode or dissolve." For me, the loss of so many years of institutional knowledge through early retirements or unplanned departures, the continued stress of the post-COVID changes, the lack of consistent, clear and connected leadership across campus continues to put WCC in jeopardy of living up to its mission to the students, community, and employees. We can and must do better. So as promised...
Thank you. There any public comments? Seeing none. Vanessa, do we have any written communication? I'm sorry, you said one? One. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Moving along to special reports, presentational local strategic value best practices for 2023, Dr. Julie Morrison?
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening. We're pleased to be here tonight to present to the board our annual local strategic value, which highlights how WCC best meets practices in serving our local partners and the community. As you might recall, completion of the local strategic value, or LSV, as we call it here at WCC, has been a requirement of the state's community college appropriations process since 2011. This year, the LSV has been approved as Section 230 of Public Act of 2023. The local strategic value is one component of the state performance funding formula that determines the percent increase in each community college's budget each year. And it requires that all colleges, community colleges, demonstrate that they meet four out of five best practices in each of the three categories that are related to how they make an impact in the local community. The state requires it to be approved by board resolution every year, which trustees will do later on in the evening. We go through this every year, but it's a good reminder. This is the funding formula that the state uses in awarding the appropriations, including the local strategic value. And this formula has not changed in some time. That doesn't mean that it won't in the future, but as of now, the allocations start with a 30% sustainability that's proportional to the prior year's base appropriations. So all colleges get that sustainability of 30%, which you see in green on the slide. 30% weighted contact hours, and those are weighted so that contact hours in programs related to health, technology, and industrial programs are weighted higher. Then 10% each allocations based on completion rates, which measures our own improvement in six-year completion rates for certificates, degrees, and transfers, and then the completion number, which is the number of completions. And completion performance rate relative to all 28 community colleges. And 5% of the formula is allocated for administrative costs, and having lower costs is preferable to having higher costs. Finally, the 5% that you see there, local strategic value, with the words in red, is 5% of the entire formula, and this is something every college does and that is kind of a you've completed it or not kind of thing, but without it, you do not get this increase in appropriations. So it might seem like a small portion of the funding formula, but there are lots of benefits to completing the LSV every year. Obviously, the most important is funding. WCC has consistently received among the highest increases for this fund every year, especially among like colleges. And this year, fiscal '24, the allocation of the college received is the highest in the state among all the community colleges. The LSV is also part of state transparency reporting, and we have to post this on our homepage every year, once it's been approved by the board and sent on to the state, so that it's for the public, available for the public to see. Most important, though, really, is that it provides a showcase of our value to our local constituents. It really documents examples of how we make an impact in the local community every year. And for us, it's our own opportunity to demonstrate our unique value to our community, our partners, and all the populations that we serve. The LSV addresses the college's ability to meet these 15 practices that you see on the slide in three categories that all relate to local activity. Economic development through business and industry partnerships, educational partnerships, and community services. Trustees will find a copy of this year's document in your packet. It notes anything that is new this year or a significant update. And tonight, Vice President Tucker, Provost Blakey, BPI Vega, and Vice President Marusi are all going to share some of these highlights in those three major categories. So call on Brandon Tucker.
Thank you, Julie. Good evening.
Good evening.
As we mentioned, we're going to focus on the partnership aspect around economic development for our county and our region. Over the last year, specifically with partnerships with local employers, including healthcare, we launched a 10-week pharmacy tech group camp, which is now in its third version of being implemented with a nearly 99% employment placement rate at the conclusion. We received continuance in our designation for Center of Excellence in Nursing Education. We hosted three health events that we want to note. We host many more, but the opioid crisis conference with Michigan Medicine, which initially started in 2021, which we continue, it's upcoming in '23. And then U of M Cancer Center has hosted for a number of years, med's health conferences here in In-Val. We've had 70 apprentices enrolled or recently completed, WCC degree or certificate programs with multiple employer partners. It's only a snapshot. We know that we have about 3,000 apprentices when we look across our institution, but those are 70 new apprentices based upon our new partnerships. And then we partnered with Toyota and Subaru of Ann Arbor and the YMCA NSK as an intermediary for their first registered apprenticeship program. What that means essentially is that we hold the paper with the Department of Labor and are the leader for their apprenticeship on their behalf. We launched the FAIN program with employer partners, held a signing event. That is the first chapter in the state of Michigan, and we were selected through a competitive process to become the educational partner of choice. We had our CCAT renewed. We know that we are now, yes. Yes, FAIN is the Federation for Advanced Manufacturing Education. It initially started as a Toyota program, and about seven years ago, Toyota gave it up, and they made it a national program, opened it up to all industries. And Michigan wanted for the last four or five years to be a state that had a FAIN program, and through our partnerships, we were selected, and we're the educational partner. The CCAT grant, which is our partnership with the University of Michigan, now entering year six, that was renewed, $15 million. We are the only community college partner, and that allows us to not only upgrade equipment, but also provide professional development for faculty and for us to develop professional development for industry through that funding. We hosted their Global Symposium, which they do every year in 2023, where people from across the country were able to see our facilities and had one of the best keynotes they've ever had from President Belacca. The Wolfpack Works Campaign, which this was a campaign that we started over the last year to promote the success of our students in internships, apprenticeships, and job placement. So we have been basically highlighting these students, and it has been a great campaign that has had employer interest, but then also our students are really happy to be highlighted. Parker Dewey, which is a national firm, partnered with us. We're only one of 12 colleges nationally to do micro internships, which are small projects, generally one month to six weeks in duration, and allow students who are in existing programs, business, advanced manufacturing, to get experience. They can put on a resume and then jumpstart into an actual apprenticeship. And then we continue the service desk apprenticeship with Michigan Medicine, which now is in its fifth year of existence, and that allows students to go through our IT program, who are currently employed, get the skills, and get an upgrade on their job while working. When we talk about customized training for area employers and companies, we expanded our partnership with TradeCo. You've heard about this partnership before, and if you drive the campus, you'll see that there are two semis on our campus. That has been an amazing response to an employer need. Just over the last year, 40 students completed with nearly 98%. All but two were employed at the end. So a huge, high percentage of employment rate. And then we were selected for the Amazon Career Choice Program, which is the program for the three Amazon locations here in Michigan, where individuals who are hourly employees get $5,250 a year to go to school. We've had 37 students in the first year, and we have been asked to consider expanding that program to online, which would have a national reach with Amazon. There's currently four national partners for online, and hopefully we'll be the fifth. Entrepreneurship Center continues to service students, alumni, community. They saw 400 new clients this year, over hundreds of virtual in-person sessions. One thing that we found in COVID was that we had to pivot and not just offer in-person, but now our virtual are matching the amount of our in-person sessions, about 50/50. Through the Entrepreneurship Center, though, we've expanded our programming to include the Make It Real 12-week training. We had 100 participants in that training, and the solvent, which had nearly 50 participants, and that was a challenge that was in community with either for-profit entities, so businesses, or nonprofits, and those students had to go solve the challenge. And that's a new programming offering that we have provided this year. And then we launched the incubator with 24 community-based startups. So this is a very tightly knit group that will be together for at least a year, and essentially allow them to go from idea to market and then expansion. And then our annual pitch competition, nearly $25,000 was given away this year. That compares to about $7,500 the year before. And because of that success, we were asked to do a pitch at the Ann Arbor Art Fair, where three individuals received money, and those were all artists from the cultural and arts community. Our SBDC, Small Business Development Center on campus, which we have been a host for over 20 years, 1,040 clients, supporting 3,373 jobs, 51 new business startups, and we helped create and retain 257 jobs. But if that wasn't enough, $201 million in capital was received through that office. And there are a mighty team of four people, I believe, that do that. We talk about technological advancement. You all have heard about our semiconductor technical training program that we're launching in the next year. We were proud to be a part of the only community college to be selected in terms of STAR, which is the Semiconductor Talent and Automotive Research Initiative, with KLA around the corner, IMEC, the University of Michigan, and other partners. They recently had an ask to MDC for 15 million, because their goal is that they want to create a manufacturing hub right here in Ann Arbor, in addition to research and development. The EVJA Grant, also known as the Electrified Vehicle Jobs Academy, with Mich Auto, the Workforce Challenges Network, MDC, and Simca, has provided funding to send our faculty to training in specific the areas of electrification and batteries. Our faculty, now eight of them, have gone to this training, and they're at Stage Three, and we have a number of faculty that will be going this fall to complete Stage Four to get their certificate. We received a $2.5 million earmark to support Electric Vehicle Charging Station Installation and Maintenance Program that we're launching within the next six months, as well as a battery lab. We know that electrification is more than just batteries, is more than just vehicles, but it also moves over to semiconductors. They're all connected. So those three programs are being funded through that earmark. And then we continue to offer intelligent transportation training and data analytics, visualization, now moving to Salesforce Developer Cloud practitioner, knowing that everything is moving to the cloud, and we want to make sure that we're providing, not only this training for incumbent workers, people that have a job, but individuals who want to move into this field. We continue to showcase our Advanced Transportation Center, now after nine years. This was our seventh year at the North American International Auto Show, and we were just last week at Ann Arbor Sparks Mobility Road, the motorbella, eyes are designed, and we always have a display at the CAR MBPS Conference each August. In 2023, we also acquired the Harley-Davidson LiveWire, which is an electric motorcycle. And we did that intentionally because we cannot fit a car in our cybersecurity lab for automotive. So now those faculty and those students are able to penetrate and hack essentially that LiveWire right in that classroom. Our trade partnerships continue to grow. We had more than 4,000, which is most that we've ever had, attending from UA, fireworkers, which had an extended contract through 2030, as the OPMIA, which is the Operative Plasters, Masons Electric Workers and Roofers Union, estimated $20 million of local impact. This is up from around $17 million in previous years. And then we established a green fund to support our old electric vehicle and college fleet plans that we have to get to our goal of reducing emissions. This year, Ann Arbor Spark recognized President Belacca with the Economic Development Champion of the Year, and we're continuing to grow. Too many today, but there's a large representation from both our board and our staff, or industries, not just engaged in our community, but also some of those industry and organizations engaged across our country. And then our Wash No Economic Club, which, shameless plug, it's Thursday. We hope to see you. Last year, we had a number of key speakers, Ova Barbie, Tim Skubik, of course, our researchers from U of M, and then, of course, former lieutenant Brian Calley.
Could you tell us what the CCON subject is?
Yes, it is cybersecurity, Sensei, which is the newest cybersecurity firm in Ann Arbor, which Bouchard Coccari, as well as former Governor Snyder are founders. We're talking about cybersecurity, and it affects us in many ways that we know about and ways that we have no idea about. So it's definitely going to be a good event if you can make it. 2022, 23, the Center for Career Success grew their numbers, not just in person, but also virtually, assisted 1,879 individuals. We registered over 1,600 open positions, so we contributed to that 85,000 open position number in Michigan, did over 100 classroom presentations, and hosted over 150 employers and 350 attendees at our three career fairs, and we held some niche fairs this year, specifically on mobility and did one for internships. Our Certification Center, which offers more than 200 energy certifications, is open for business, and we've seen business grow this year, over 3,000 tests, where traditionally went through that center, which is right around the corner in this building, which is up 13% over the prior year. Next up is Educational Partnerships. Provost Blakey will take it away.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, Brandon.
So part B is educational partnerships, and the first area is active partnerships with regional high schools in the school districts to provide dual enrollment, middle college, and other programs. For the second year, we partnered with Embracing Our Differences, and I think some of the trustees were able to attend that event, which is a large-scale, diversity-focused art installations across the county. For WTMC, again, over the last five years, 85% of their students have earned an associate degree upon graduation from high school, and 31% of the graduates graduate with multiple credentials. The average graduate from WTMC earns 67 transfer credits at the time they graduate. We continue to partner with local high schools to offer in-person and virtual dual enrollment. This fall, we have 1,327 dual-enrolled students. 13% of our new students are dual-enrolled. We also continue to partner with local high schools. So we have 16 in-person classes that are offered onsite at various high schools. And remember, this past year, we became a post-secondary partner with Kensington Woods High School, and that's our sixth partnership for a dual enrollment or middle college partnership.
Where is Kensington Woods?
That is in the Howell-Brighton area.
So in terms of the summer youth candidate expand that BPI Toker has spoke about time and time ago, we have added actually two new pay camps to our existing ones, aside from we got robotics, video game, producing, music, art, and engineering, and STEM. And the NASA Academy of Future Space Studies and NASA and World of Camps have been added to the community enrichment piece. We continue our summer learning experience at Part Reach that BP Toker has talked about in the past. We certify teachers in math, reading, Spanish, and STEM instruction, and actually also expanding the programming for extended ages. The college hosted the fifth annual STEAM Week with over 48 sessions in person and about 500 attendees from high school, the community, and the college. And this was the second year in which the college actually joined with the campus explored and the admissions office. We held in February the sixth annual CET month events, including field presentation for students that are actually interested in pursuing CTEs careers. Similarly, as you can see, the ATP area has been actually pretty busy, with the welding department hosted the 2023 High School Welding Invitational, over 160 high school entrants from eight different schools, and Skill USA State Welding Competition with more than 50 entrants from 12 Michigan high schools. Transportation Technologies hosted the 2022 Skills USA High School Regional Competition with 75 participants, up from 65 from the previous year. As we all aware, we are participants on the Detroit Drives Degrees to support student access, completion, success, and enhancing our intentional and intrusive advising models. Curriculum pathways and other means to improve students' outcomes are actually part of that partnership in which we are one of the six colleges that are part of the event. We've been working and refining our prerequisite model for college reading, writing, and math, new approaches to allow students to move to college level in one year or less. Previously, a student will have to go maybe two years without getting into their gateway course, and we also implemented a new course to increase the math level in as little as three weeks using what is known as the Alex tool. We continue to meet the student preference in the modalities that we offer in terms of our courses, with increasing in-person offerings, where around 60% of our offerings are now in-person, and that's what the student is actually demanding. We still continue the availability of, of course, certainly strong online presence and virtual model of instruction, in which the virtual model of instruction, actually, we're about a 78% success rate, which is about the national average. We, of course, we just finished the second year of the Title III Grant, the Alpha Scholars. We have 143 students, and the goal was to have about 150, about the five-year implementation of the grant, and 25% minority and 94% persistence rate.
The fourth area is programming to promote successful transition to college for new and re-entering adult students. I told him to get up here earlier.
We launched Advanced MC with D3C3, known as Detroit Drives Degrees, provides us $2 million in grant funding to allow 300 U.S. landy high school students, as well as their parents and adults, with training as well as preparation for high-wage, high-demand jobs, $40,000 or more in mobility, transportation, manufacturing, and other demand, high-demand fields. We have around 50 adults that we have that are starting this fall, and we're starting our high school students for dual enrollment starting in January.
Thank you. We continue to support our frontline workers and our adult students through our state programs. As of this August, we had 478 students enroll. As of this August, we had 478 students enrolled in the Futures for Frontliner Scholarship. Remember that was the individuals who were continued to work when we first shut down for COVID. And we have over 1,600 students who are enrolled using the Michigan Reconnect Scholarship, which is for adults who are 25 and older, who have not yet received an associate degree or bachelor's degree. That program is going to be expanding to cover 21 individuals who are 21 and older, starting soon in January. We've held WCC and new events to support students of all ages and we focus on flexible opportunities for adults. And again, we do a lot of information sessions for Reconnect Michigan Achievement, which is the new state scholarship for students who just graduated in 2023. The other thing we're doing is to our student foundation, our emergency fund continues to help students with costs that are outside of just tuition. We helped 112 students this past year with assistance with up to $500 for emergency needs, perhaps for housing, for tires, for, you know, utilities, things that they need to support them in their education. We continue to increase our OERs, our open education resources. And to date, we've saved students over $10.1 million in textbook costs since 2017. We now have a total Z degree in our math and natural sciences area where there's no textbook cost for the entire degree. And we have four active Z certificate programs as well. So right now we have over 300 text-free general education courses and 49 of those courses have been used by over 7,000 students. Our Bailey Library continues to maintain 300 laptops. Those are generally checked out at the very beginning of the semester. Students can check them out for the semester. And we've, you know, had those during COVID, but we continue to do that program after as well. And we continue to support more than 60 computer labs on campus to meet the technology needs of our students. Our mental health services, we continue.
Question, please. What's the useful life of our laptops that we provide for our students?
Five years.
Five years.
And so years four and five, they're still good, apparently. I'm surprised. I would think that functional obsolescence and software updates would take over earlier than that.
Five years is kind of what we use on for our machines as well. It's about a five-year rotation for our machines also. I can speak to that because that's what's on my desk. So for student health and mental wellness services. So we continue to do our mind and mental health, our communications from counseling. We have relax, rejuvenate and repeat sessions to mitigate stress. We do those again throughout the semester. Our WellTrack app, which we started using last year, had over 1,500 visitors last year. That's an app where students can go on and kind of monitor themselves, kind of ask them how they're feeling and give them different kind of tools to help with kind of anxiety and stress that they might have. Our Protocol 24/7 Call Center has immediate support and referrals. And again, we have a number of calls that come into that number every month. Our counselors, as we came back to campus, are continuing, they do in-person camp counseling appointments. But we also continue to do virtual appointments because we have students who are still not coming to campus and they can do their mental health services virtually. So we had over 600 personal counseling appointments in the last year. That was a 77% increase over the prior year. We held our first wellness fair last year. It was very successful. This year, we actually, we had it in the winter semester last year. This year, we're actually doing a fall, a wellness fair, and we'll have one in the winter as well. And that was, we had resources from across the community that came in. So as well as our services from our Student Resource Center, our counseling offices and different services areas that we have on campus, but we had a lot of community resources and it was really well attended by our students. Our active collegiate recovery program for students who are seeking, you know, recovering from addiction or alcohol addiction, they are providing naloxone training. And Clarence just told me that we now have a naloxone dispenser that will be provided in the library, providing free naloxone packets to our students and anyone on campus using the library. We continue, we partnered with NAMI, which is the National Alliance on Mental Illness. And we're providing a facilitated support group to our students. And our frontline staff, this last year, we had one of our counselors was a trained person who could do QRP, question, respond and persuade training. So she was able to train a lot of our front counter staff, our public safety staff in terms of they're sometimes the first person that's talking to a person, a student that might have some issues where we need some quick response to and transfer to a counselor. So that training was very well received by all those frontliners.
Again, we're talking about the growth of the STEM Scholars Program from 16 in 2018 to now over 90 in 2022. And the new cohort has reached 39 new students. Part of the new STEM scholar cohort where about 15% are minority, 15% minority, about 50% are female. We got a 35% transfer rate and we got 100% retention on that program. And the HBCU pathway programs is keep expanding. Now we are up to six HBCU partners. And we celebrated the HBCU Day with about 480 high schoolers and family attended. And we have all the showcase of all the HBCUs that came to visit to show in connecting students with those potential universities for they to transfer when they complete our degrees. We have updated our agreements. We have currently about 86 total agreements with other institutions. And we just added or renewed 14 new agreements, including cybersecurity, health administration, graphic, web design, exercise science and other disciplines. The latest one being in social work with EMU, we just signed a few, a few weeks ago. We continue the WCC and we're proud to say that WCC is still the largest transfer institution to the University of Michigan. We partnered with the University of Michigan College of Engineering and Dr. Tracy Chubb, dean of MSC right now, which is being actually in that journey with us for the last few years in which we have twice an event in which we bring the representative of the School of Engineering for our students that plan to transfer to engineer, which is actually quite sizable number of students who transfer. The UN Medical School, one of the top medical schools in the country, always hosts the annual How to Get Into Medical Schools to show the student the path into actually achieving the dream of being admitted at the medical school and the University of Michigan. And we, of course, collaborated with the Michigan State College of Engineering in co-developing the NSF proposal for EMI, Electrified Mobility Innovation Engine, to accelerate the deployment of EVs and EDPs technologies.
And it's my pleasure tonight to talk to you about community services. The first category for community services is that we provide continuing education programming for leisure, wellness, personal enrichment or professional development. The college currently offers more than 200 different classes each semester for personal enrichment and professional development, including corporate training and lifelong learning. In 2023, we received, oh, let me go down for that. In 2023, 2022, 23, we had 4,000 students enrolled, including corporate training and lifelong learning. Last year, WCC's Corporate Training and Lifelong Learning Department received certification by the Learning Resources Network, which is a premier certification. And we were one of 168 community colleges in the country that was awarded that designation in ensuring quality and continuing education programming. The college holds a Liberal Arts Week event in connection with the National Arts and Humanities Month in October. And the event is open to campus and the community. And it included a week of WCC sessions on the importance of liberal arts education and its impact on life and workplace skills. Further, the college has taken an active stance in encouraging exercise among employees and encouraging students to participation with the American College of Sports Medicine. In 2022, 23, the college was awarded its Gold Level Exercise is Medicine designation for its commitment to creating a cultural wellness on campus, one of only three community colleges nationwide to receive this. The college launched a significant new health and wellness initiative this year to promote all types of physical activity for campus, community, the To the Moon Fitness Challenge. Number two, the community college operates or sponsors opportunities for community members to engage in activities that promote leisure, wellness, cultural, personal enrichment. The Offices of Instruction, Student Development and Activities and Diversity collaborate to provide events, performances and training to students, employees and community members, promoting diversity and multiculturalism. Examples in 22, 23 included the annual Martin Luther King Jr. College Celebration and Week of Beloved Community Educational and Community Events, Fourth Annual Equity in Action Awards, recognizing campus leaders and communities leaders in promoting equity at WCC. In addition to that, monthly celebrations related to diverse populations, Latinx Heritage Month, Equity Talks and the college's Juneteenth celebration. The college offers an annual opportunity for community members to experience WCC college courses at no cost. In 2021, WC expanded its Free College Day event to virtual week long Free College Week in 2023. And it remains popular, it remains a popular event to this day. And we usually run that in April, so it collaborates with Community College Month each year. This year, we saw 1,003 individuals taking part in over 80 virtual courses with 6,133 total enrollments. In 2023, WCC's Performing Arts Department offered a three-year-long World Arts and Education Series in the Towsley Auditorium and online for students in the community, including live and virtual performances, lectures and discussion from around the world, ranging from African drumming to Jewish and Romaneye musical traditions, Chinese traditional music and arts and more. Number three, the community college operates public facilities to promote cultural, educational or personal enrichment for community members. In July 2022, the college reopened its Morris J. Lawrence Building and had, after a year-long renovation, which we were really, really, really thankful for, coming back to the Morris Lawrence Building. And basically, we, we came back to not just this beautiful center, but we also came back to state of the art technology. The building erected in 1990 is dedicated to providing conference and other services, event meeting, performance space and education enrichment, professional development and workforce development, community, business and industry needs partners and many, many others. A new art gallery was part of this and it was opened as part of the renovation in 2022. The flexible open space is designated to showcase the art of WCC students, faculty and local or regional artists. Faculty, I'm sorry, and local, regional artists. In 22, 23, it hosted exhibits of student and faculty art, highlights from the college's art collection, the regional saw, philanthropy, philanthropy, there we go. Philanthropy exhibit highlighting black giving and the Michigan Art Education Association Regional Three K-12 Art Show. The college exhibits works of student and local artists throughout the public spaces on campus. And since 2016, has led an annual juryed student art show mounted primarily in the Student Center and Liberal Arts and Sciences Building. The show is open to the public and has works available for purchase.
Before you begin the next one, can you bring us up to speed on the page that you're on there?
Yes, I'm on page three.
I'm on, I'm on the monitor. It still says number two.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm very sorry. Number four, sorry about that. Number four, facilities to promote leisure or wellness activities for the community, such as and including gymnasiums, athletic fields, tennis courts, fitness centers, hiking or biking drills or natural areas. So the college has a community health and fitness center, as you know, that serves a capacity membership of approximately 8,000 community, student and employee members. Usage continues to rebound following reopening after the COVID shutdown in 2020 with nearly 6,000 members as of spring 2023. The center offers over 65 different health and fitness courses per week. Members have opportunities to participate in special programs such as mediation, aqua size for arthritis, master swim, HI, MyFitRx and Tai Chi. Additionally, the college's Health and Fitness Center has been certified as a medical fitness facility by the Medical Fitness Association since 2014. And this year was no different. The center continues to offer specialized programs in this area, providing programs and services for individuals transitioning from therapy, surgery, managing medical conditions, weight loss or recovering from injury or illness. In May 2022 and 2023, WCC served as official host for the Murph Challenge, a national fitness challenge that raises scholarship funds for vets. The event is a collaboration between the WCC Wattem's Veteran Center and the WCC Health and Fitness Center. And finally, the community college promotes sponsors or hosts community service activities for student, staff or community members. Student development and activities continue to expand our esports program, which launched during the 2021 year. And the college opened a new esports arena, as you're aware, in winter 2023 and brought on additional staff support, two full esports teams, which compete against other collegiate teams and daily drop-in play for students. The college's dental assisting faculty oversee a dental clinic on campus that offers low-cost dental services, cleaning services for students, faculty and staff, while providing hands-on opportunity for the University of Michigan dental students. The clinic offered service to 263 individuals in winter 2023. And the dental program also offers dental service at Hope Clinic in Ypsilanti. The college partners with the American Red Cross to host blood drives several times per year. The college also partners with United Way and sponsors an annual campaign promoting WCC employee involvement and giving to causes supported by the organization. The college hosts an annual volunteer fair to connect students with local nonprofits. In addition to supporting regular promotion of Washington United Way's online database of local volunteer opportunities, through WCC's presence at Partridge Community Center in Ypsilanti, the college hosts and oversees multiple community meetings to promote community involvement and volunteerism. And WCC was designated a voter for in the campus for the third consecutive year in 2023 by the Campus Vote Project and NASPA for its high level of student civic engagement and level of voter registration on campus. In addition, the college was awarded a silver seal as part of the All-In Campus Democracy Challenge for student participation in the 2020 election. The college's Sustainability Literacy Task Force, whoops, I went too far. Literacy Task Force annually hosts a free climate summit called the Climate Con, open to students and the community. Each year's event has specific focus and is designated to spur positive action. The Fall 2022 theme was Solutions and Hope and featured speakers, book readings and hands-on activities. The task force also promotes student and community opportunities to the recently established Food Forest, book reads and other activities. WCC has been designated a B Campus USA for the fourth consecutive year in recognition of work enhancing pollinator habits, pesticide reduction and providing educational and service opportunities to students in the community. And finally, in the summer of 2023, the college collaborated with the Region Nine Veterans Community Action Team to host a second annual Washington County Vet Fest, a large-scale free event servicing approximately 500 individuals, featuring food, activities and resources for veterans and their families. And that is it. Thank you.
Any questions? Rusty Hatcher?
I suspect this is for Julie, but so we submit this to the state. Does the state ever respond? Do they ever say, "Good job?" Or they just give us money?
No, they don't. No, they don't.
They just give us money.
They wouldn't give us money if we didn't do this, is that the theory?
Right. And how much, how much money are we to get? Is it a set amount? Is it based on the criterias that we meet?
So the whole appropriations that we discussed were based on that whole funding formula. The local strategic value itself, this year, I don't have the actual number in front of me, but it was north of 30,000. But that's just one slice and it's that 5% slice. So, you know, there's a lot more that goes into it. And we did have the highest appropriations that. that goes into it, and we did have the highest appropriations, the percent change in appropriations of all the colleges this year.
I actually have a number of questions, which I, if I could submit in writing at some point, as I was reading through this, but I just want to say, it doesn't matter how much money we get for, for this, or what their response is, it's all good. And this is the kind of thing that we give to the community, and then when they go to the polls to support us as taxpayers, they see the value that we provide and support us generously with military renewals. So I, I look at this in that light, and that's where the benefits come.
Thank you. And we, I think we do too, because we use this document throughout the year, and it, it's unique, and it's specific to those three areas of outreach to the community and to partners, so it focuses us with that.
Thank you.
Alka, you wanted to say something?
Actually, Steve Devarelli said.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, thank you, that was fabulous. Okay, moving on to Monthly Reports, Tab B. That the Board of Trustees approved the personnel recommendation as submitted. Do I hear a motion? So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Trustee Hatcher?
Over dinner conversation, some of my questions got answered. The full-time new hires in workforce and community development aren't all three new. One is, two of them are new, one of them isn't, but they're grant-funded, so that's excellent news. I guess I was a little disappointed, and perhaps more coming, that there was one full-time instructor listed in the instruction. I suspect more coming. Yes, sir?
In the, in the August, I remember, there were total of seven full-time faculty that were added.
Seven, and so this is one of seven?
And, and that one was kind of, that came after.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Because there were like, seven in non-instructional replacements, so at least we're even a little. You see what I'm saying? There's seven, yes, okay. And I guess I'm concerned about the library, losing so many people, that there's no head of the library right now, and then they lost two other staff members, so in terms of academic services to students, we're kind of weak right now, and we need to hire some more people. But those are my only comments. Thanks.
That's a comment.
What's that?
That's a good comment.
Oh, good, you, thank you.
Hang on, okay, I'll be right with you, just a second. So, no, that's okay. Picking back off of what Trustee Hatcher commented about the vacancy of the library position, I trust that there are key personnel in that area that are able to, that are cross-trained to pick up the duties in the interim.
Yeah, I can speak a little bit about the library. The, the executive director retired in May, that position, we have entered in the executive director of the library with Sandy McCarthy, which is one of our librarians. The departure of Beth Kennedy as the director of access services, that position is posted to be hired and to cover for Sandy, and actually, we have a librarian, we have two professional librarians, and one is a sabbatical in this fall semester. The other position, we hired a long-time, part-timer that knows the library inside and out, and she's actually a full-time temp librarian while, uh, 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 Molly Leatherman is a sabbatical. So, but yeah, we're filling the positions as we are doing some restructuring to, to better serve us too, so.
Okay, thank you for that. Trustee McKnight-Morton?
I just wanted to just give another recognition for Anthony Williamson on his very challenging and excellent way of, he handled the Parkerage Center and his retirement. Wish him well.
He did a phenomenal job there, Parkerage, he'll be missed. Anyone else? Okay. And we, did we already ask for motion, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Tab C, Financial Report. VP Barnes, I trust you have some things you would like to add?
Yes, I would. Okay. Good evening. This is a summary of how we finished fiscal year '23 in the general fund, how we finished versus the budget for fiscal year '23. Most of this information you heard throughout the year when I presented each month, so nothing should be a real surprise here, everything should be consistent with what I've said previously. But here in the, the fall, winter, spring tuition revenue, all favorable. Even though we were down between 1 and 1.6% each semester, we had budgeted to be down 4.2%, so disappointing that we were down, but better than we thought we were going to be in the budget. Same for student fees. Local property taxes, we knew were going to be higher at $1.5 million. State appropriations, this is largely the LCSA, also known as the Personal Property Tax, turned out to be much higher than we thought, actually. This is something that is difficult, if not impossible, to estimate, so we go by guidance that we're given from officials at the state. So we're expecting that to continue to be somewhat favorable going forward. Trade partnerships, much larger in scope than we had expected in fiscal year '23, so good there. And investment income, as everybody knows, the interest rates were higher, we invested more of our money into bonds and so forth, so a lot more interest. So in total, there, revenue up about $7 million. Similarly, in expenses, also favorable by 7.7 million, you'll see there under total expenditures. This is various reasons, some, of course, is the vacancies that we mentioned, other times it's the attrition that when someone retires, for example, we often are able to bring a more inexperienced person in with, with lower pay, so which reduces expenses. Fringe benefits, when we do a budget for fringe benefits, such as pension expenses and healthcare and so forth, we're always conservative because we don't know what pension program the employee's going to choose, so we always assume it'll be the most expensive one, and if they choose something less expensive, that's favorable for the college. So things like that add up, and also there were some contingency funds that weren't spent by each department, so in total, 7.7 million favorable under expenditures. We did take that money, as, as the board will recall, you'll see that we put $1 million into the green fund, you'll see that there. You'll also see $10 million that we moved over to the plant fund, this was to support the camera project that was approved by the board, as well as an additional $7 million that we transferred to support, undesignated projects for now, but as you saw during the budget presentation, we have over $20 million of projects coming up, so we'd set that money aside last year. So in total, after setting that money aside, we had about $3 million left over in the general fund. One other thing I'll highlight, this is the, the performance of our investments. I thought I'd just give you a brief summary, since it's the end of the year. You'll see there in that first column near the top, we finished the year with $36 million in bonds. The number right below that, we finished the previous fiscal year with $26 million in bonds, so we've set, until we use that money, until we use it in terms of the projects that we have coming up, we park that money into bonds, which some mature each year, so we always have money coming in. But that, we're, that helps us a lot with the interest rates, or with the interest income, rather. And also in terms of how we're supposed to invest our money, you'll see here that we're all within the ranges, when you look under investment type, as well as the credit ratings of what we're investing in, it's all very, very high investment-grade bonds, it's all distributed exactly as the board has prescribed. And finally, there is a minimum amount of working capital that the board has established that we should maintain. That working capital for fiscal year '23 was 5.8 million, we had about 12.9 million, so we were, we were favorable by about $7 million for fiscal year '23. Any questions?
Any discussion? We're good? Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
I move we accept the financial report as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Hey, moving on to Tab D, Facilities Development Report, VP Beschi.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll begin the report with a update on a capital project. We have one capital project that's active, it's the shipping-receiving, building-maintenance garage renovation, and that design is underway. The project is focusing specifically on health and safety issues, and that's going to be the scope of the design as we finish it up. The current vehicle mechanic folks are in the maintenance garage, and the issues that really make that an unsafe area is that the, we'd have to bring the maintenance garage up to code with a sprinkler system, fire protection, emergency lighting, HVAC, and ventilation, as, as well as the second floor is a wood structure that'd have to be demolished. So it makes more sense to move, make the vehicle mechanics over to the SRB building, and then turn the maintenance garage back into a storage. That design should be wrapped up at the end of this month, and then go out to bid, and we will hope to begin construction late fall or early winter for that. Next, I'll highlight a few deferred maintenance projects. If you look at number eight on the list, Baseball Diamond Backstop, that project is out for redesign as well. We have been looking at the orientation and studying the design of the replacement of the backstop, and understand that because of the orientation of the field, we do have to have a sunscreen, but it needs to be, or can be, a tighter area that has to be protected for the orientation of the field and for the pitching mound. So we're going to redesign what's required, send that out for bids, and hopefully have better participation on the bidding, and, and more competitive pricing, and get that out for bids late this fall, and, and end construction or completion in early winter in time for spring baseball season. Couple other projects to report under the deferred maintenance. Over the summer, we completed a couple of projects at the Health and Fitness Center. You'll see a picture of the surface, the track, the running and walking track. We resurfaced that in August, we put down a 2-millimeter-thick polyurethane product which has a greater ability to stretch and form to the point load, so it should last longer than the original track that was down. It should be softer for the people to walk on, and it should have a greater ability to stretch and not crack, as we experienced with the original surface that was down. And then, also at the Health and Fitness Center in August, we installed a rubber floor, the 10.5-millimeter-thick sports floor that went down over the freeway area. And then, in campus repairs and maintenance, we've wrapped up a lot of projects over the summer. I'll just highlight one project that we started in June and finished in the end of July that was in time for the UA event, was a ventilation project for the plumbing lab and the boiler lab, two exhaust systems that were put in those labs that they could conduct training for water heaters and boilers during the UA week. And that's highlights for this month's Facilities Development Report.
Trustee Hatcher?
I just wanted to thank you for the seemingly easy, smooth repair of the sanitary pipe. It's, it's all done.
It's 100% done.
And we're all still here, and, you know, it was, thank you very much for that work.
You're welcome. We're all glad it's done.
Yep.
And it went real, it went smoothly, we were happy with how it went.
Just a quick question. So as I'm looking at this, just as an example, the second box, Campus Repair and Maintenance Projects, I add up these numbers, and they're a little bit less than the 6,91,000 that's completed or in process, and then we have this uncommitted fund balance. That uncommitted fund balance, that's just sitting there waiting for stuff to happen that we're going to allocate it to, right?
That is correct. So we're really just kicking off this year's fiscal plan.
Got you. And that's, that's the case here on the first one, close to 3 million that's waiting to find projects to be spent on.
That is correct.
Probably got a long list of those.
We have a long list, we work off a five-year plan, and we are just beginning to open up those, so you'll see in the next few months, this list grow.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead. Two things I want to ask about the Harriet Street move, has, has the move been completed yet?
So the, the space is finished, it's ready to occupy, and the classrooms are set up, but we need new office furniture, so we have new furniture systems ordered that will be delivered hopefully early next month, and then once those are in place, we will move over officially and start using the space.
In October?
Yes.
Okay. And then, just, just a compliment here, I really like how you've listed your construction contractors that were issued in the last 30 days. I like the listing, because I, I don't think I've ever seen a listing of the contracts issued in the past 30 days exceeding 20,000. This is really nice, I like that.
Good. We include this, but yeah, there's, it's a robust list this month, because we actually, well, we missed a meeting in August.
Right. I guess I hadn't paid attention, but it's really caught my eye of how this product lists here.
It's good to point out, I mean, there's a lot of work here that, that's kind of behind the scenes that you would not normally see listed in either the deferred or the CMR, so it does show a lot of other activity that goes on.
Right, great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
What else? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate your time. All right, now remarks from members of the Board of Trustees. Anyone?
I would like to make a couple of comments, Madam Chair.
Go right ahead, Trustee Lemmy.
Thank you very much. It's good to be back this fall. I see a lot of really great, great things in this report, and it's awesome, especially that local strategic report, it's awesome. So first want to give a lot of compliments and kudos to this team before I have to say something that I'm concerned about. I am concerned that we don't have the voice up and running. That hurts me personally, as you know. I see our journalism program as mission-critical to democracy, and it hurts that we don't have that up and running, but I know we can't spend the energy on that search until some other bigger things are resolved too. And so what my plea is to this group is, please, you know, just get it done, get the work done, because there are other things that are being held up, because you're not getting it done, you know? And I just wanted to know that hurts, but I understand why we haven't gotten there yet because of some other bigger problems, and I have faith in all of you to, to do it, you can do it, just, please, let's get the, let's get my newspaper back.
I respect that. Actually, if I may, it's unusual to do this, but Linda, could you just summarize the interviews that we've been having for that position?
Oh, so this, it's a key position for us, it's also unique in that it's
It's also unique in that it's, you know, we run it as kind of a nine-month position on the school year, and so we've struggled to get applicants. So we have done a few interviews, but the fit is important. And so even though someone has met minimum qualifications, they have not been at the Washnau standard for how we want that person to be a leader for the students. So we are continuing, we've put out kind of feelers to other schools and other programs to try to get more applicants, but I agree.
Yeah, I appreciate all that.
Continuing to get their scholarships.
Yep, good.
They're not being heard in terms of finances, but we are struggling to find the right fit to that job.
Yeah. I know it's an energy expense. You've got to take time to do that. And I know that you're held up on other things, too. So it's just, you know, yeah. Okay. All right, well, maybe we can get somebody, you know, from Fox after they dissolve, so or whatever, or something, but no, I appreciate it. Thank you.
No, thank you for that comment.
The Detroit Auto Show just concluded, as some of you may be aware. It's about a 10- or 12-day event. Two weeks ago, the first day on Wednesday is Media Day, when media assemble from all across the country, some overseas. Thursday are Industry Days. And in the layout at Kobo Hall, now Huntington Place downtown in Detroit, we were part of the display on the first floor of the convention center. In years past, education and trades and things were on the lower level. They weren't a part of the excitement upstairs. This year, everybody was on the same floor, and Washnau Community College was there with a bold presence, the only community college that was a part of the Detroit Auto Show this year. Michigan State was there, the University of Michigan was there with their solar car. UMTRI, the University of Michigan Transportation Research Institute, was there. They had a series of lectures. It was dynamic. There was a lot of information exchanged. We had, I'm not sure, a half dozen, maybe 10 staff that were rotating through, so we had a presence there during the course of those two important days and then on into the general public show as it unfolded. And I was impressed that we had the face that we had that we did there, and a lot of good contacts came from it, and we did well.
Trustee Hatcher?
I was prepared for this meeting to congratulate all of you for a fairly smooth start of the semester. Our system didn't crash. That was one of the first times in the last couple of semesters that it didn't crash on the first day.
Unlike the University of Michigan.
The university had, let them have the problems. We were a very smooth start. And then I began to get lots of phone calls, and it's not such a smooth start. There are so many concerns, I think Julie Kissel mentioned several. I think there are probably some in her document, but there are questions of, let me put it this way, and I've put it this way to Rose as well. Our face to the community, as we just saw, our face to the auto show, our face to Washington, DC, is extraordinarily wonderful, but our face internally isn't so good right now. We have staffing issues, we have leadership questions, we have transitional issues that are making the employees feel very uncomfortable at this start. And I wanted to say what a wonderful start it was, but I can't because it isn't such a wonderful start to the school year, and I'm hoping we can fill in the gaps, find the leadership internally that we need. And I think we're moving in that direction, but I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that, you know, school, the academic year starts in September, right? Do we know that so that in August and July, we sort of get ready for that? And we're not ready. Thanks.
Pressed it already?
Oh, one more thing, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I need, others like it, to the authorized strength and organizational charts, because we got them last September. It was a suggestion I made that the org charts could go on online rather than paper, but that's up to you. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I want to thank, I look at this, these strategy things that we present, and it's all great, a lot of things are great, but I want to second my fellow trustees, Christina Fleming and Ruth Thatcher, its concern, leadership issues. I, too, love print media and digital media, and the Washnau Voice is an award-winning newspaper. And to me, it's a failure of leadership that we don't have the voice up and running. The first thing I did when I came on campus this month was to look for a print edition. I found some print editions from May that are still out there, but nothing current. And these, it's, Christina said it, this is part of democracy, it's part of the transparency that we as a public body need journalists out there, independent journalists, to hold the light to us in what we do here. So I hope we get that going. I understand we're down two deans, and I hope we can move ahead quickly with good-quality deans, because that has a huge impact on how all the other things that we won't need to implement in our educational systems happen. We need that leadership there. And then along the lines of transparency as a tool to hold us accountable, to upholding our democracy, when I first got on the Board of Trustees eight years ago, I was recently going through some boxes, and I came across this videotaping board meetings thing from 2015. I had asked if we could stream our meetings so people, so the public could see us live. We do a good job of hosting the meetings. The technology we've invested in, in this facility, the Morris Lawrence Building, when we renovated it, I understand, has opened up opportunities. I backed off on wanting us to stream eight years ago because of the cost, but we've invested in state-of-the-art technology that's right here in this building. And my understanding is that we can make use of it and stream, if not through our own site, through a third-party site like YouTube, and then post links on our, I even actually started looking at, oh, maybe we want a WCC YouTube channel. I know they have educational channels specifically. They have a whole element of education stuff on YouTube that people can stream into, and maybe as a secondary thing that we do after we start streaming our movies, our meetings, so that people can see us in action or inaction, either way. The, I hope that we can maybe look into developing that sort of a way to showcase what we do on this campus digitally and electronically through the opportunities that the technology we put in place here will allow us to. So I'll be looking into that. It's something I promised the voters eight years ago, and I'm still here, and I intend to look into it again, and I hope we can do it. I think we owe it to our constituents who so generously support us.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? Well, just real quick, I'm happy to be back to begin a new year. Thank you to the executive staff for the hard work, literally the hard work that you all put into this, to the report that you presented. It's always airtight and solid. It really shows just how much you dedicate yourselves to the advancement of this institution as well as the advancements of the students that are here. I, too, also attended the auto show, and it was fabulous. I got there a little late, so I missed the automobility area. That area was cleaned out. I noticed when I did walk in, I saw Magna International, I'm actually an apprentice there. I'm studying to be a product developer. We had a presence there as well. But also, too, what I noticed there with the rise of EV vehicles, we are actually embarking on free-form, and what free-form is, if you looked into a vehicle, the seats actually look pretty flat. Well, that's because the trim and the foam and everything is pressed down, but we actually make the patterns on a regular-sized foam and three-millimeter or six-millimeter or 10-millimeter material, and we put it in a pressing machine, and it presses flat. But that's the thing now that a lot of the automakers are going into, the OEMs are going into now, upcycling, sustainability, recycling natural fibers, corn and what have you. It's totally interesting on all levels, and I'm really excited that I did have the opportunity to go to the charity preview and get a firsthand look at what other companies are doing behind the scenes, like Magna, like Lear, and things of that nature. So, yeah, it was great. I'm sorry, I missed you. You must have left before I got there.
Couldn't stay all night. Had to call and quit.
Trustee Milchey.
Thank you. I had a great time along with Trustee Hatcher at the Park Ridge Summer Learning Experience Celebration. It was great in August to see the kids. First of all, I was very impressed. Oh, and Trustee Milliken, yes. And President Blanca. It was a great event. I was very impressed. I actually practiced some of my Spanish with some of the kids, and they were better than I was. And the dancing, the singing, the performances, the program is really important. You saw the parents in the audience who were proud of their kids, and I think it's such an important program. And I do want to give kudos and congratulations to Anthony Williamson, because when he spoke, that community respected him greatly, and he will be missed. There were several people who had tears in their eyes. He will be greatly missed, so it's going to be huge shoes to fill. But overall, Park Ridge and the entire program there, it was very impressive. So thank you to the college, thank you to our staff, VP Tucker, for all your work there. It was a great event. I look forward to attending every year.
Trustee Hatcher?
You reminded me, the year before last, I suggested that the summer program have a camp song, and they had a camp song.
They did.
They paid attention to my suggestion. I was thrilled.
Did you record it?
No. It was a cute little song, I mean, you know, for spirit and I did something good.
Good. Anyone else? Okay, where's one, President Blanca?
Yes. First of all, I'd like to thank the trustees. I'd like to thank you for your comments tonight, and I want to assure you that, well, first of all, this is factual, that we do meet every day following, the day following every board meeting. And all of us take notes on your comments, and we look at them and talk about how we're going to address them. So I believe that you made some very sound and I know probably difficult statements, but I appreciate that, and I assure you, we will follow up on that. And it has been a rough start. I agree. I agree with that. I also would like to thank the board members, that all of you, for spending the time that you do, because I know that you have lives. And I serve on boards, and it's not easy to serve on a board, because I have a job, I have things I also want to do, and yet I serve on a board and I have to give that time. And so I want to thank you for the time that you give us. Thank you. And on the days, two days that you spent at the auto show, thank you so much and for attending sessions that, you know, I wouldn't even want to go to. Not ours, but thank you so much.
That'll never be a candidate for streaming, that particular.
Yeah, no, if we were live, I wouldn't say that one, but, yeah. But anyway, that, it was very, it's been good, and thank you for meeting with all of us. And to the administrators, you know, it has been a tough beginning, and I hope, I believe you know that. I know that you know that, and I know that you all are working very hard, and, but we have to, we, this is not us. This is just not us. And so we're, well, we're going to move forward and be the people we are. This is Washnau. So, but thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, moving on, moving on, moving on. Tab E, this is, these are up for discussion. Review of 2025 to 2029 WCC Capital Outlay Plan, Dr. Julie Morrison.
Tonight, we'd like to provide you with a very brief overview of the college's annual capital outlay report that will be submitted to the state. As you know, capital outlay is the portion of the state budget that's dedicated to the planning and financing of construction, renovation, and maintenance of facilities for public colleges and universities. The report is required to be submitted each November and contains updates on instructional programming, staffing, enrollment, the facilities assessment, and deferred maintenance. As is the case each year, some enrollment and other data in the report, we will need to update after the state's official count date in October. So trustees will receive a final copy for the vote on the capital outlay at the next board meeting. In addition, the college has included a fiscal year 2025 capital outlay project request for funding this year, which is Section G of the document. Last year, we submitted a request for funding for a Center for Success, as you might recall, including the renovation of the current Student Center building. This year, we are resubmitting this project with several refinements that recognize the recent rise in construction and materials costs, and also focuses the project more specifically on student, employer, and community success and innovation. Rather than proposing a full renovation of the building, the update request titled "The Center for Success and Innovation" proposes relocating or expanding seven existing services as focus centers for success, reconfigured rather than fully renovated in space in the Student Center. The plan will allow the college to increase accessibility and capacity for existing key services, supporting academic and career success that are used by students as well as employers, the public, and our college partners. Services to be included would include the existing Entrepreneurship Center, the Small Business Development Center, the SBDC, Center for Career Success, the Certification Center with learning labs, apprenticeships and experiential learning, corporate and community engagement, and a new Comprehensive Student Wellness Center. A number of these services, for example, the Entrepreneurship Center and the SBTC and the Center for Career Success, are already currently at or near capacity. You heard Vice President Tucker speaking about some of these services earlier tonight. And some of these are also removed from student traffic, so not easily accessible to students. Bringing these individual centers together within the Student Center would allow for better coordination and collaboration among the various services, connect students with consolidated options for learning and career support, and promote entrepreneurship. consolidated options for learning and career support, and promote entrepreneurship center across populations and disciplines. In addition, the student wellness center helps to address a documented need to support student mental health and wellness. And all of these would complement the one-stop student student services that are already in the building. So it is essentially the same request with some refinements as we just discussed. We look forward to sharing a final copy with trustees next month.
Trustee Hatcher.
I do understand you would need to update after October. But is that many, many pages of update?
No.
So could we just get the updated pages and you don't have to duplicate this whole pretty little thing?
Well, that's not a bad idea. Sure, I don't.
I'm looking at Linda Blakey because she's responsible for most of those updates.
So some of this data is annual, but then we do some fall updates, which will be after the 15th. So we could do some of those pages.
That would be, I mean, that, I would appreciate that.
But we'll send the complete one to the state.
Yeah, it'd be a complete, we don't have, we just get the changes.
Bullet form.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Oh, that was great. Thank you. Thank you for reading my mind, trustee Hatcher. I was going to ask the same thing. Okay, moving on to tab F, review of fiscal year 23 audit, VP Barnes.
Good evening again. So I'm going to present a portion of the financial statements called the management's discussion and analysis. And then I'm going to turn it over to Tracy Moon, who's the partner at AHP, our audit firm, and she'll go through the report out to the board itself. So, and just as a reminder, this is not just the general fund. What you see every month is the general fund, but this final audit is the general fund, it's the plant fund, it's the auxiliary fund, it's the pension and OPEB fund, it's the restricted fund. So it's all of that consolidated. And also, any variances you see in this report is not versus the budget, it's versus the prior year. Just level set everyone. So what are some of the highlights from fiscal year 23? The net position of the college did increase by $20 million, 20.3 million. It improved to $64 million. If we exclude the impact of GASB 6875, which basically relate to pension and OPEB, the net position of the college increased by $11 million. Operating revenue also up. Basically, most areas were up. Tuition and fees were up. The fitness center, as was highlighted earlier, has continued to rebound. The conference center reopened this past or this past fiscal year, which is also up, and trade partnerships were improved. Combined pension and other post-employment benefits or OPEB, the liability at year end was 151.7 million, which was up $45 million versus the prior year. You may recall, last year, we had a huge improvement in the liability. And I and I mentioned that we were very likely to see a reversal this year, and that's what's happened. So the stock market, at the time of measurement, was down. And also, and I'll point this out later as well, but the discount rate was changed. And what that means is when you have a lower discount rate, the pension liability increases. Our operating revenues, a little more detail. Tuition and fees, fall and winter, you can see that we did decrease. Not happy with that, working on it more this year, but it did decrease. But we did offset it with the increases in tuition of non-industry students, along with the increase in the infrastructure fee. Auxiliary services increased, again, because of returning members to the Health and Fitness Center. And and the other revenue also increased largely because of the conference center as well as the trade partnerships we have. In terms of our operating expenses, I'll draw your attention to three lines in particular. The first line there, the instruction line, debt increase from about 48 million to 51 million. That is due to the allocation of the one-time MIPS payment that we got from the state. So the state, not only do we pay into the pension fund as a college, but the state also helps supplement those payments. So that was the application of that supplemental payment from the state of the pension. That's that increase. Also, if you look at the fifth line down, student services and student aid, that 29, it goes down to 22. That was simply a reduction in the HERF funding. So that that was HERF monies that were distributed to students in 2022 that were not distributed in 2023 because we had used them up. And finally, depreciation and amortization, which is the last line there, that is higher this year because we opened up the ML building, the renovations, and the Great Lakes building. So that depreciation starts to starts to run when those buildings are capitalized or are start start working. I also wanted to point out that overall, if you look at the things that are related to what the college's mission is, the instruction, the instructional support, student services and student aid, over 70% of everything we spend is on those areas. And it's and that's even better than it was last year, and last year was also good. Non-operating revenue, a couple of key items. The you can see there, the second and third line down, the HERF funding, again, we basically had utilized the grant in fiscal year 22. There was really nothing left in 23, so that went down. The interest rate environment, if you look at the investment and interest income, you see that's about four and a half times greater than it was the previous year. I'm right now expecting us to have a pretty good year this year as well, because interest rates are remaining high, at least in that area. And in terms of property taxes, taxes were up by three and a half million dollars last year as property values in the in the county increased. Looking at the results in total, you can see everything here, all the way from operating revenue to the increase in net position. So what is this comprised of? Again, you saw earlier tonight, the general fund surplus was $3 million. There was a change in pension and OPEB fund of $9 million favorable. So just as a reminder, these big swings that you've been seeing, 45 to 50 million, those don't hit the statement of net position in in the given year. They amortize that over time so that we don't have huge swings. So this is the amortization of that. So it's actually $9 million favorable. And the change in plant fund also favorable, it's the transfer of the monies we sent to the plant fund, net of depreciation and amortization. So we sent quite a bit to the plant fund this year for for various projects, including the undesignedated projects we have coming up. Looking at it from a balance sheet perspective, the total assets increased largely, this was the incremental bonds that we purchased that I pointed out earlier. That you can see in line three over on the right-hand side, the other line, that's largely, most of that line is the increase in the bond payments. The second sub-bullet over to the left-hand side, the $41.7 million increase in total liabilities, again, most of that is attributable to the pension and OPEB expense, which you can see on line seven. It goes from 112 to 156. And and the 53.9, which is the last area, again, this is simply the amortization or basically the deferred inflows and outflows. You see that over on line five and line nine to the right. But again, that's just related to amortization of certain events that happen over time for pension and pension and OPEB. In terms of cash, if you look at the first two lines there, operating activities and non-capital financing activities, those two lines together are basically the operations of the college, the day-to-day operations of the college. So the college brought in about $24 million in cash. We turned around and we used that cash, about 12 million or 11.8 million, more precisely. We used in capital projects and so forth around the campus, buying equipment and renovations and so forth. And we also invested net about $6.6 million, again, bonds, some in long-term, some in This I showed the last couple of years. This is not part of the audit per se, but this is used by the Higher Learning Commission to gauge the overall financial health of the college. So they have a composite index. It's actually four indices that they put into a composite index. And it just shows you over time the financial health of the college. So you see a little dip there in 2019, 2020 because of COVID. It rose because of the HERF funding. And now it's, but it's still, you can see that we've continued on the good trajectory even without the HERF funding. So this is good. You know, for one, we can invest where we want to invest, like in online. But also, we've had enrollment has continued to decline. So it is nice to know that we have this set aside until we can get enrollment more stabilized and increasing the enrollment. So here's our our usual next steps, which is basically submitting this to federal and state government agencies and so forth. But I'll I'll turn it over now to to Tracy Moon, who's our audit partner.
Good evening.
Hi.
First of all, thank you for having me here tonight. I appreciate the opportunity. And I also want to thank you for the opportunity to be your auditors and your business partners. And I'd also like to thank the employees, all the employees and management that helped with the audit. Some of them are in the audience tonight. Without their help, we really would not be able to do our job. The information that you have in your materials, oh, it's here up on the screen. It's included, it includes our Board of Trustees' report, and that's what I'm going to be going over tonight. The audit services we provided include an audit of the college, an audit of the foundation, and a single audit, which is an audit of compliance with federal programs and expenditures. All audits were given a clean, unmodified opinion. Let me see if I can get there. The non-audit services that we perform, including assisting with the preparation of the financial statements, although management really does a really good job of giving us those financial statements in a very clean way when we first get on site. So we do help just preparing them and getting them issued. We also do the federal, the foundation's federal tax form, 990 and 990T. All services have been completed with the exception of the the tax filings. Those are in process. And then we have one small filing piece with the single audit that will be completed in October. I'm going to start with the foundation audit. That foundation audit was, we, that's completed, it's a clean opinion. We went over the foundation audit with the foundation audit committee previously, so that's all been taken care of. The foundation is recorded as a discreetly presented component unit in the college's financial statements. Vice President Barnes did a great job going over the financial statements today, so I'm not going to get into that. But I will mention that there was a new standard adopted during the year. That was GASB 96, and that had to do with subscription-based information technology arrangements. Historically, the college, when they have a subscription-based technology arrangement, they have expensed that when they pay it. This new standard required the college to put a right-of-use asset on their statement of net position and a liability. And then what happens is as the the payments are made, the liability is reduced and the right-of-use asset is amortized like a capital asset would be. It really had a very immaterial impact. See if I can get there. It had, it didn't have a very material impact on the on the financial statements themselves, except to put the asset and the liability on your statement of net position.
Is something that you guys do all the time? That little segment that you just stated? That it doesn't make, doesn't have an impact on the results? Is that is that a standard procedure that you guys do every time you do an audit?
So.
It's true.
When we when we implement, when the college implemented this new standard, there was expenses that needed to be removed from the, what I'll call the income statement. And then different expenses ended up going there. So what I'm saying is that there wasn't, with the implementation of the standard, there wasn't a big change in your net income, net loss, kind of a number.
Oh, okay.
That's all. So it's really a presentation and new reporting, but it really did not have a huge impact on your net income for the year.
Thank you. I was just a little confused, that's all.
It's confusing. If you remember last year, like leases, it's very similar to leases. It's just moving everything to the the statement of net position.
So then going forward, you will be moving things around and see if it impacts the...
Nope. So going forward, everything's going to stay on your statement of net position and that right-of-use asset will be amortized like depreciation on a capital asset. And that's how you're going to get your expense recorded, is through the amortization instead of the actual cash payment.
I understand. Okay, thank you very much.
Yep. So that was the big change this year. Again, Vice President Barnes went through the the fluctuations and he did a really good job explaining those. The audit was clean, so, you know, no, we had no problems at all. As I mentioned, the single audit has been completed. There were two major programs that we tested this year. The first was student financial, the student financial aid cluster, which was actually our first time at the college auditing that. The past two years, we've audited HERF, and that gave us enough coverage for the federal program. This year, the, as Vice President Barnes mentioned, there just wasn't a lot of expenditures on HERF, so we did student financial aid this year. That came out clean, no findings or question cost. And we also audited the career and technical education basic grants to states also known maybe as work-based learning Perkins program. You might know it as the Perkins program. We did audit that. Again, that was clean, no findings or question cost on that one either. The remaining information in the Board of Trustees' report is really our required communication, and that starts right here. I'm not going to go over that in in detail. I will mention that all of the information is answered in the positive, so there's nothing I need to report to you tonight or discuss with you as as your certified public accountant. Other than that, I, it's a pleasure to be here again tonight and to serve you guys. Are there any questions for me that I might be able to answer for you?
Trustee DeGardie.
This is a simple question, and I could probably ask Terry next month. So I'm looking at the foundation, and I've seen one line item that's both in revenue and in expenses, personnel services received from affiliate. And is that, what is that exactly?
So that's, the college provides staffing, basically staffing to the foundation. So on the foundation's financial statements, it comes in as revenue, revenue from the college, and it goes out, it's an expense because it's it's personnel time.
Gotcha. Okay.
But it has no impact, again, on their net position, on their net assets.
Right. And then I I note that a lot of the, there's a lot of, like, designated with donor restrictions on the net assets. But the the revenue that, or the, there's a net gain in investment revenue. Are the donor restrictions, does that apply to the net revenue? Or does, or that revenue can be used however they want, right?
So there, when there's earnings off of the endowment, the endowment is held in perpetuity forever. They can't touch that. But the earnings, they can use for specific scholarships and things like that, whatever the...
So if it's a scholarship for nursing, that's how that...
It's restricted for nursing.
And then anything, if you have a really good year, you could get more investment income than what's restricted?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to tab, I'm sorry, go ahead. Trustee Hatcher?
It's a good start.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, I also thank you so much for that audit report. And Terry, I'd like to thank you and your team for all the work that, are you here?
Yeah.
Lynn, thank you. Thank you so much. I know it's a great, well, thank you for what you do all year, but thank you for this audit. Thank you.
Okay. Tab G, proposed changes to Board of Trustees' policy, 6050, policy on the purchase of goods and services, VP Barnes.
Good evening again. So the, this policy contains the thresholds over which we have to bring projects to the board. And since the last time this policy was, the thresholds were reviewed, most of them were, it was in February of 1995. So if any of you have purchased a car or a house recently, and maybe you also purchased a car back in 1995, you'll notice that the price is very different than...
a car back in nineteen ninety-five, you'll notice that the price is very different than it was then. So the purpose here is simply to adjust the numbers for inflation. So since February of nineteen ninety-five, inflation has just barely exceeded one hundred percent, meaning that a good or a service that cost a hundred dollars in nineteen ninety-five would cost you two hundred and one dollars today. So really, the only thing that we're doing here is proposing that we apply that same formula to the threshold. So you'll see that the numbers in the policy are roughly double, just like that price roughly doubled. You'll see that throughout. There were also some minor changes to some of the wording. Our general counsel reviewed and made some minor changes to wording to, to bring it up to date with the law and with some, and to modernize the document. But, but mostly the point is to look at the thresholds. Any questions?
Great. Thank you. Oh, Trustee Hatcher?
I just, this is, could be moved to action. I'd like to propose that this recommendation to approve the revisions to the policy on the purchase of goods and services as submitted be moved to an action item?
And the agenda to do that?
That's what I'm asking for.
Yes.
I, I don't think we need to do that, but I'm willing to support it because I have absolutely no problems with this. So I second your motion to move this to an action item.
So the motion would be to amend the agenda to make this...
Yes. I'm sorry, amend the agenda to make this an action item. That's right.
I'm assuming she made the motion.
I did.
And then I second it.
That's right.
To add this to the agenda.
Add this to the agenda. Right.
So discussion. Is it going to be a roll vote, or is this all a favor vote?
It's a probably roll call. They add it to the agenda, and then a, a roll call.
Yeah, two roll calls.
And then...
Okay, any discussion on amending the agenda to include this as an action item? None? Okay. Vanessa, if you can call the roll, please?
I think it's a voice vote, isn't it?
Let's do a roll call.
Okay.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Devarty?
Devarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Do I hear a motion? How do I...
I move this, now that it's on the agenda, I move this for a vote, that we approve these changes to the policy on the purchase of goods and services. Policy six zero five zero as submitted.
Are you a motion?
Support.
Okay, now we're doing all the favor vote? Our roll call vote?
Roll call.
Okay, Vanessa, please call the roll. Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Devarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Good call, Trustee Hatcher. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to tab H, which is the purchase of AKS plasma cutter machine. Dean, is it Baber or Bobber?
Baber.
Baber. Well, I, thank you for my, my slip up.
Good evening again. Good evening again. Yeah, we're here with Dr. Rebbe. He's going to explain and give some more details in terms of the request to purchase a new plasma cutting machine for the ATP program and the welding and fabrication program.
Awesome. Thank you.
So thank you. This is my first time before the board.
Oh, you'll be all right.
I, I feel I'm fine. But a couple of things I want to, before we open up the discussion, I wanted to give you some information. So the proposed plasma cutter is safer for students and faculty, is, has the automatic shutdown, and it features, and other safety guard rails. The current plasma cutter is about eight years old, but it's outdated with software and technology, which this machine will have both. The industry is clamoring for this technology, and a benefit to employers is it cuts down on manufacturing and production time. In addition, students learning on the new plasma cutter will start at twenty-eight to thirty-five dollars an hour. Without that, they are about fifteen to twenty dollars an hour start. So this is a specialized skill they will learn. There are a few workers that are skilled with the knowledge to operate this equipment, which stems from schools not able to train on this equipment and outdated technology. There is difficulty finding quality operators who can operate and understand the system efficiently, efficiently or effectively. Those who can are in high demand. So currently, with the current plasma cutter that we have, the only two people or two schools in the state is WCC and Ferris that has that plasma cutter. And I know this is a discussion item, but down the road, if this is approved, we will be the only school in the state of Michigan, four-year or community college, that will have this piece of equipment. The only one that is close to us is in Illinois. I do not have that institution's name. I can get that if you would like.
No.
But we would be the only one that has that. Also, students that are pursuing certificates or associate degrees in welding will all get to learn on this machine, and of course will increase their profile and also make them very, very more marketable.
Trustee Devarty?
I'm all for this.
Yes, sir.
And my question is on timing. Is this the kind of thing, what's the lead time on ordering this and getting it in place?
We already had bid. Actually, I have a tally, and we already have a bid. I don't know what the time would be for delivery. I don't know that I can get that to you.
I'm just curious, is this an item, if we received it, if we approved it tonight instead of a month from now, could it be in the classroom and people learning on it this semester? I'm just wondering on timing, is it something that, is it beneficial for us to do this? If people are in favor of it, is it beneficial to us to...
I think timing wise, yes, but to, to stand here and tell you that I have an exact date of when it's going to be delivered, I do not have that.
So the equipment that we have in place as of right now, it is still satisfying its purpose to whenever this new piece of equipment come. So when it does arrive, is there going to be a, a learning gap from one, from one machinery to the next? Because, you know, the, the operations are different, maybe, just like you, I'm sure, you know, you can get on any software and pretty much pedal your way around because all the basics are the same.
Yes, ma'am.
But is this system that you're looking to bring in going to be in ready mode, if you will, where there won't be a lot of training time for the instructor to, to be able to give it to the students?
Yes. That the training time won't be a lot. This also has been a piece of equipment that is, has been suggested, or should I say, recommended by advisory boards, that we should have this piece of equipment. This also puts us ahead of everybody else, puts our students ahead of everybody else. I just can't, I'm not, I can't say that, I mean, I don't believe it's on back order, or it would be an issue of that, but I don't have the exact date of when it would be delivered. Yes.
That machine is also, for the lack of a better term, it's kind of a plug and play. So essentially, this connected, this next machine, and just make the electrical connection, like machine is ready to go.
Ready to go? So when, I'll be with you a minute. So when you find out what that is, we can find out too?
Yes.
Because this is, we want to make sure that our students are in face of the most updated equipment as, as possible at all times. So I'll leave it at that. Trustee Devarty?
This is the kind of thing that I see more of a timing urgency for approving sooner than later than...
Yes, sir.
On the last vote we took.
Yes, sir.
We've invested significantly in our welding program. I think it's one of the strongest welding programs, if not in the region.
Yes, sir.
Geographically, well, if not in the nation, certainly in the region. And I'm thinking geographically, not just the state.
Sure.
It's, I think it would be of great impact to our welding program, which we've significantly, since my tenure on the board, increased the seating and enrollment capacity of, and invested in the facilities. And I think this would be a wise investment to make. And I, I would like to move this to vote tonight, to change, to, just like we did with the last proposal. I think the timing issues are more important on this. I'd like to move to change the agenda to add this to the agenda for a, for an action item tonight.
Okay, I was going to ask if all the other trustees are aboard with this? Okay. All right, we'll have to amend the agenda then to change this to an action item.
At least a voice.
You just did.
We've got a second. Now we can discuss it, and then vote on it. Let's do a roll call.
All right. I'm sorry, you already said what?
Question on whether to move it to an action item?
Yes, we did discuss it.
Sorry, I already discussed.
That's why I'm like, now we're discussing. All right, so we'll have a roll call vote, amending the agenda that we've already discussed to do, if you could. Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Devarty?
Devarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Yes.
Now let's go ahead and vote on it, so that we can get this up.
I move that we approve the purchase of capital equipment using the Perkins grant in amount not to exceed three hundred forty-six thousand seven hundred ten dollars for this piece of equipment for advanced manufacturing department.
Vanessa, you can call the roll. Discussion?
I would just like to say, I, I, when I read this, I don't know what this machine looks like. I really don't know what it does. But it sounds like something that it needs to be done right away, as we just, was just discussed. And I would like to see this, when you find out how soon we can get this, almost like, how quicker, faster and quicker.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to see a visual of it, too.
Yeah.
You know, that, that would be helpful, too, to put a face to the number.
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
Any other discussion? Okay, Vanessa, if you can call the roll, please? Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Devarty?
Devarty, yes.
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 Well done. Dean Baber?
Thank you. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to come before you tonight, and thank you for supporting our students, as you always do.
See you again, right?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Picture.
Picture.
All right, moving on to tab I, catalog, curriculum management, and scheduling analysis software recommendation. Provost Beck, Blakely.
What names?
Excuse me.
I guess.
Give me. Linda Blakely.
Good evening. So today, I'd like to give you a little background on why this is such an important piece of software that I'm proposing that we get. So currently, the only layouts that we provide to students in terms of program layouts are full-time layouts and for our associate degrees. Layouts assume that all of our students start in the fall semester, and we have no semester layouts for any of our certificate programs. Why is this a problem? It's a problem because seventy-four percent of our students are part-time. And so we're not providing the information that they need for the type of student that they are. The other problem is that we're assuming that, I'm not assuming, but we're assuming on our webpage, that our students are only starting in the fall semester. As you can see, in Fall '22, we had over three thousand students who started as new, but in the winter, we had another almost two thousand students. So we have a lot of students who are starting our programs in the winter, but we're not reflecting that in how we display the programs. If you look at, currently, our systems have no capacity for multiple layouts. Our curriculum management system, which is Curriculumet, is clunky and not user-friendly, and we currently have no system for schedule evaluation. What some other schools have done, this is from Sinclair College in Ohio, you can go out, you find a program, and you can see in the drop-down box, it says, do I want to be a full-time Eagle? Their Eagle is their accelerated programs. Do I want to be a full-time, regular full-time or part-time student? The student picks that, and then they can see, oh, if I'm a full-time student, this is what the program looks like. I can download it, I can print it, and all the information is there in a, in a handout that's, that the student can use. If they pick a part-time, the same thing, it provides, what do I, what does it look like if I'm a part-time student? So again, all this information is readily available for them, and it gives the student a sense of, can I do this? Is this possible that I can work in this program into my life that might be having family issues, work issues? And again, if we're only displaying full-time layouts, it looks daunting to students. And we can show them, you can do this program as a part-time student year-round and have the program done in three years. So we did an RFP. I, I have to tell you, we have been, I have been begging for this for years, years. So we did it. We had an RFP for catalog, curriculum management, and schedule analysis. The people that participated on that was Victor, the Director of Curriculum Assessment, Ben Linford. We had the Chair of our Curriculum Committee, Randy Van Wagenen, who you all know from presentations from the Curriculum Committee, myself, Kathy Curry from the Registrar's Office, Kat Christie-Sing, who does manage her services with scheduling, and Pat Brocko from our IT area. So we looked at three, we had three bids from companies that do this type of software. Our software selection recommendation is to use Courseleaf, which is provided by Leapfrog Technologies. It has three components. It has the catalog, the display of the catalog I just talked about. It has the curriculum management, which kind of, you know, does all of the tracking of any course changes, program changes, and then also it does schedule analysis. So it's a three-year contract. It's a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. The first two years include implementation costs. After implementation, the annual cost, software will cost about fifty thousand dollars. That'll be offset by about forty-five thousand, which we're covering in Curriculumet and Software College, our software costs right now. So the, the catalog component will allow for multiple layouts, as we talked about before. We could also do, you know, online-only programs. I mean, it, the, the amount, the amount of choices that we, the students that we can provide will be amazing. We'll have curriculum management, which will replace the Curriculum, Curriculumet software. And the schedule analysis, schedule analysis component will be something that we don't have now. It'll be, it'll have, ensure that the class schedule. So as we have these layouts and we develop them, as we're building the schedule, it'll say, wait a minute, you've got a layout here, and you don't have a section to support that. Or identifying where courses that are required in the schedule are scheduled in conflict, and it'll immediately identify those as we're scheduling those sections. And so our goal's moving forward is that all of our programs will have full-time layouts that make sense for student success, layouts that will be available for both fall start and winter start, or we may have programs that are small enough that it'll note that this is not really a winter start program, it's a fall start program. We'll also have almost all, thank you, Sheri, because our health programs will continue to be full-time only, but almost all of our programs will have part-time layouts that will provide students year-round pathway that will show completion in nine semesters, three years. And all of our certificate programs will have semester layouts as well. We had a great, great, great working sessions during fall in-service. So we had working sessions with two of our divisions that have a lot of our programs, the Business and Computer Technologies Division, as well as Advanced Technologies and Public Service Careers. We had one day where we had a working session that focused on full-time. So all the faculty and all the advisors for those two divisions, these were required sessions. But the work that was done in terms of, you know, working, looking at, what do the layouts look at? Having the advisor saying, you know, this is confusing for students. And so we had a day that focused on full-time layouts, and then a second day that focused on part-time layouts. And then we're going to continue to work on winter starts for both those full-time and part-time layouts. Do you have questions? Yes.
Is Courseleaf widely subscribed to by other colleges?
Yes. Yes. It's used by hundreds of colleges and universities across the U.S.
So it's about time we got there, too?
Yes. It's about time.
I'm all for it.
How long does it take for this to be, to, to switch it over so it can be live?
It'll take a few months, because part of the implementation is, Courseleaf will actually build all the, all of the programs that we have initially. And so it will be, and all three of those components will not, it'll be, we'll do one component, basically one component at a time. So it'll take a little bit of time. So those implementation costs actually are covering this year and part of next year.
Oh.
So it'll take a little bit.
Okay.
It's a big project, but...
Yeah, okay. Trustee H?
If Linda Blakely wants it, I do, too. There's no question. But I'm wondering if there's something like this for developing schedules. In other words, some... In other words, some, something like this that would help a department chair who is constructing a schedule of courses to see, I need to have this course available at this time to support this program. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, there is, there is, one of the things it provides is heat maps. So if a department is putting their classes out, it'll show, oh, you've only got classes midday. You know, it'll show the kind of frequency of sections of classes, so it'll know, like, you need to do some morning classes, some evening classes.
For department chairs.
Yes, because it'll be actually, see, and I think what's really important is looking at when those courses are offered, that they're not in conflict with, you know, this math class needs to support this physics class, or needs to support a program in ATP. And so making sure that it's not in conflict with those classes that are required in the program. So it, and it displays it just visually. They immediately see it as they're putting the section up.
So chairs will be able to use it as well.
Yes. Yes, absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If you'd like to move this one tonight, you could.
I'm, I guess I have a question. Does...
Yeah, I can't do everybody else. It's not mine.
Is there, would there be a benefit to, if there's no objection on the board, would there be any benefit to moving it and approving it tonight?
Of course. We could start it faster.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to move this item onto our action agenda.
Any discussion for this? Support?
Or it'll make our meeting next month shorter.
Back in it. Okay, Vanessa, if you can call the roll, please?
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Devarty?
Devarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
If, I'd like to make a motion, since this is now on the agenda, to approve a contract with Leapfrog Technologies for the installation and implementation of the Courseleaf Catalog Curriculum Management and Scheduling Evaluation Software for the next three years in an amount not to exceed $180,000.
Support?
Support.
Any discussion? Vanessa, call the roll.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Devarty?
Devarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Man, talking about getting business done. All right. Tab J, Resolution Regarding Local Strategic, I'm sorry, yes, Local Strategic Value Best Practices for 2023. This is an action item. The recommendation that, is that Washington County Community College Board of Trustees certifies that the college does not, I'm sorry, does meet, excuse me, does meet the best practice standards required for the state appropriations under Section 230 Michigan Public Act 103 of 2023. Do I hear a motion? Remove?
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Devarty?
Devarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Hey, we made it through. And I just want to add this real quick to VP Tucker. I forgot to let you know that I did attend the, by happen chance, the pitch competition at the art fair, and it was phenomenal. And the ones that won, if I'm not mistaken, they're the ones that come through the Entrepreneur Center. And you could clearly tell, they were a lot more prepared and organized. Yeah. Okay, with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Go move.
To the board.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, thank you. Have a good night.